Hey Bill.
Hey Bill.
Hey Bill.
You know, it was not in here.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You gotta turn that around.
Hello, 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 hello. We still got five minutes, 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 minute. Oh, Dave, you're not your typical jolly self today, are you? Yeah, I'm sorry. Usually you're all over silliness. I just, especially that echo. Oh, echo, echo. That's a good point.
Did you come down? Which way did you come?
I did.
Surf Bro was still there.
I, you know what, I never even paid attention.
Oh, they're gonna be here for days. I can't imagine that though. Surf Prominche.
Let's go to meeting order. Microphones, everybody. We'll keep Sarah happy, Kristen. Fred, lead us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody, and welcome to our workshop meeting. Here's Charlie. Welcome, Charlie.
Hey, Charlie.
Workshop meeting, March twentieth, twenty 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 five, or twenty twenty five. The meeting's been called to order at five thirty. Announcements are, if we've got any emergency, please go out the front and the rear door and meet over by the church. Though we all know everybody's out of the building. And under new business, we have Lawrence, is it Friedberg? Friedberg, sorry. Special use permit, one twenty-nine Costa Road. And come on up and speak to your application, sir. That's all right, just however you want to share, put one there.
They can share, we can share, they can share. That works.
Thank you. We like to share. So, um, we are seeking to build an accessory apartment on the property at one twenty-nine Costa. We are the owners. I'm also the architect. The motivation for building the project, the original motivation was several fold. One, to get solar. Two, to have storage for the, you know, lawn equipment, that kind of thing. Third is that a small apartment basically would be for family and friends. And or would be potentially at some point, if we needed to make a little extra income, we could rent it out.
As, as it stands right now, our house only has two bedrooms. And we have growing grandchildren who are getting bigger than the sofas.
And how these are septic?
Septic is, was built for three bedrooms. The house is two, so we'd be adding one bedroom.
So you got a thousand gallon tank?
Yeah.
Okay.
We actually put in a five hundred gallon supplementary tank over by the, the accessory apartment. You're putting that in? Yeah. Put that in and then tie it into the, to the leach field. Yeah. And the square footage is six hundred and twenty-nine feet? Right.
You got room?
We got room. We are underacred. The, the new law says two acres, I believe, to, to build the accessory structure. We got one point oh seven. We are surrounded on two sides by Apple Greens Golf Course. And the, to the east is, Andolas have a big
subdivision.
Farm.
Right.
Is it in front of the zoning board yet, or?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Are you gonna have to increase the size of your?
Sorry?
No.
Okay, you're not gonna have to.
Built for three bedrooms originally.
Built for three bedrooms, okay.
Right.
Everything is there already. So we're just, you know, adding.
So basically, we need the relief from the acreage. And we're six hundred feet, six hundred and one feet above the, the coverage. Six hundred and one square feet.
All right, so basically, we just need the ruling from zoning board, the variance.
Is the building?
Yes, that's all, that's all. I don't know much to this project.
Can someone speak into mic, please?
Give him, give him.
Thank you. You should probably keep it over there.
Give him that one.
You guys are the app.
Sorry, do we have an extra one? Okay.
Yeah, so so, I don't think there's much to this.
Yeah.
Tractor piece and actually pass very well are actually into the space. You guys saw the, I think that first image.
Yeah.
Do this one. I think that's a, I think that's a good use for this. It is, aren't there the square footage allowed? However, with the building itself is not six hundred and twenty-nine foot deep, just so you all know, larger
Great, because he wants storage there also.
There's a floor plan in there, about twenty-five percent of it's stored.
Right, yeah. Bill, Dave's mic isn't working.
Okay, good. I had a couple of questions on this one that maybe Dave addressed, and I couldn't hear it. I, I was questioning whether the accessory building being so far away from the driveway is an issue for the fire department or not. And that was just a question. I don't know the answer. I hope maybe Dave does.
He said it wouldn't be an issue.
It would not be?
Correct.
Okay, then the other question was, since they are putting solar on the bill, on that new building, will they need a separate approval for that?
No, he said. Can you hear him?
No, I can't hear Dave.
Quit yelling, Bill.
Okay, sorry. And then I guess the third thing was the zoning approval that they are, where are they gonna need, because they're under, only have one point oh seven acres.
Yes, already done. They're taking care of that now.
I got that.
And the, the solar installer does any permitting that's required.
We would have added on to the the shed and turned that, but as you can see, when we originally added the addition and the shed to the house, back then, the variance was only like fifteen feet.
No, it was three feet.
Three feet, okay.
The setbacks changed from the time, we filed the addition and the shed ten years ago. At that point, we had twenty-five foot setbacks on each side. Okay.
Scott, I had one other thought, and, and you can, it's up to the applicant. If I'm not mistaken, this is the same Mr. Andola, who's appeared before us on several other matters. So I don't know whether this applicant is on terms where they could maybe make sure he's not gonna have any issues with the placement of the solar.
Well, that'll probably, yeah, I don't think, I mean, again. Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's just a nice suggestion to speed things up when it comes to public hearing. They'll be ahead of the game.
There's also between our property and his, that whole line there is all trees.
All woods.
Okay.
It goes, you know, we look out over my brother's property. I'm a rovers.
Okay.
No, really. You had to say it's.
I shouldn't count against it.
All right. And mind you, we're all just kidding here, that's for sure. Okay. No, it looks fine right now until you get an answer with the zoning board, then come back and we'll go from there. You wanna set, I mean, it looks pretty. You wanna, next week, we can go to.
PDA, there's no crystal ball, so I would say wait.
All right, we'll wait. That's true. That's true. We had a couple. With the zoning still being in decision mode, we, we really need to wait. We can't do anything until they're done.
But it's appreciated.
Yeah, you'll probably get your variance probably next month, and then you'll come back.
Maybe, that's again, we didn't know.
That, maybe.
I had a couple of comments.
And at the same time, I'm gonna ask staff if they have questions. Kristen, you go ahead.
Yeah, just a couple of comments regarding the septic system. Maybe looking for some documentation from the Ulster County Health Department about the original approval for the system to make sure it has capacity to handle this additional bedroom.
My brother put it in.
Did you have to say that again?
This one's probably okay, okay.
It's a bedroom, so you, Kristen, you're probably only looking at what's hundred and ten gallons a day, so I mean, with a five hundred gallon tank, it should be fine.
But it's not even going to be used constantly.
Right.
Yeah. Well, yeah, the health department doesn't take that in. They, they assume year-round use. We noticed that the, how are you gonna be getting access to that building? Because is it just over walking across the lawn to get to the back there? There's no walkway or anything? There's no issue with fire department, right, Dave? Fire access, okay.
They can go all the way through the field. We have an opening that they can drive right through the field over the lawn. Absolutely no problem.
That would be to the right side of the house?
To the west side.
Okay, so you gotta go between the house and the garage, it looks like, right?
No, it's on a road, you can get in.
It's actually, it's actually here.
Yeah.
There's, there's an opening between the trees and another set of trees here, and this whole thing is all open.
But that's somebody else's driveway now, that's somebody else's property, isn't it?
That's my brother's property.
Doesn't matter, Frank, if it's a fire problem, we go anywhere we want.
That's true.
It'll be gone.
That's true, you're right. Put it there, it'll show up faster.
Here's another thing, just so you guys are aware of it. We're looking at it, and we understand your purpose and your need, but that need may change. Or, or I'm gonna say, the purpose may change later. In other words, it still may stay as a, as a apartment. And you're saying, yeah, you really don't need the driveway to go back, whatever the case is.
Do you want us to show the, the area where a fire department?
No, 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 you're fine, you're fine.
Is it maintained, that, that we're snowing out and all that?
Well, hold on, let me finish what I'm saying. If you were to sell the property, it still has to, it has to pass and meet the code regardless. So we understand that, yeah, you could do that, and it's your brother's property, and you can go across. So that's the reason why we're asking all these questions. Because later on, if you sold it, somebody else may not have that right away that you were saying you have. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, legally, what you should do is get together with your brother and have, get an e, no, no, just get an easement, an access easement.
But, but that's legal advice, and we're not doing that. We're just telling you.
It makes, it makes perfect sense, but I mean, otherwise than that.
Yeah, it seems fine. Let's wait till your zoning decision has been made, and then we can go from there. All righty?
Sounds good.
Anyone else from staff? Paul, you on, or you're not on today? And, and you're?
I'm here.
Paul, you have anything?
Nothing special about this application. I'd say it's a type-two action for seeker purposes. And no need for a county referral.
Great. Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, guys.
Anything else?
Nope, that's, that's it.
We're good if you're good. We're good.
Do you know when Anzola is going to be doing his subdivisions?
We have no idea.
It's not actually fully approved yet.
Yeah.
I hope so.
Okay, well, thank you very.
All right, thanks, Kristen, this is Friedberg.
Next on the agenda is Vineyard Avenue Associates LLC, site plan eighty-eight ninety-four Vineyard Avenue. The application, the plans are circulated to the board. And you're gonna speak on behalf of the applicant?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Sean Williams, I'm the architect for the project. I'll be the representative for Vineyard Avenue New Associates.
Perfect, thank you.
So, this project, eighty-eight ninety-four on Vineyard Avenue, is the Chinese restaurant and Jacob's Music. The building we're talking about, the structure is actually the empty shell behind it. One of the oldest empty shells in town. We're hopefully now going to get it filled. So I've, I refer to it as Three Milton Avenue. I think that'll be its mailing address, but, so, when I say Three Milton, I mean this one. Nope, that's a different one. Let's make sure, I've got four projects on the docket tonight, so let's make sure we're all looking at the right one.
Sit right there, stay there.
Well, there's an inter, a break. Eighty-eight ninety-four.
Brian Marshall.
Okay. Well, make yourself comfortable then.
That's what I said, have a seat, stay there.
All right, yes, that's, that's the one. So it's mixed-use commercial and residential. It's gonna be seven residential units, one commercial unit. It's central business district, so there's no parking requirements. It's an existing structure. We are not moving beyond the structure, the footprint. With the possible exception of that rear entrance, where if we need to use that stair, we will, in order to make the code clearance from the five feet at the bottom of this, we just added a little vestibule. The owner currently wants to redesign a staircase going into that central courtyard, so hopefully I can abandon that. But he didn't bring that up until after I'd submitted everything. So, we're moving forward, but, um, seven commercial units, sorry, residential units, one commercial unit. The commercial unit, we're going before the zoning board right now, because it doesn't cover the entire first floor. It's gonna be three residential units on the first floor, which is an area variance that we've already applied for. The main advantage of this is it allows us to put ADA units in town, and there really aren't very many, if any. So this would be an opportunity to get some in while continuing to maintain the storefront along the street, reactivating an existing building, and hopefully making for a better universe.
Is it currently a fire escape on that building?
No, there's not.
Dave is willing to be required for the apartments? No?
Yep.
Okay. That's even better.
Anyone from staff? Questions?
I mean, a number of comments here. Number fourteen on the AEF, this needs to, needs to be answered on that one. Regarding the site plan, this plan needs to be overlaid on the actual survey. There's certain parts where the property lines don't appear to be lining up with what you're showing.
I mean, property lines do line up to the survey. It is overlaid on my computer.
No, I'm sorry, but there, there's about the, the, what's, looks like the northwest corner of the, the building there, there's a dimension line that's not going to the property line. That needs to be nailed down.
This line?
Go all the way to the northwest corner, which is upper left.
Upper left, uh-huh.
Yeah, zoom in right there.
Right here.
Yeah, right there. Yeah, see, see, hey, you have the one dimension line, it doesn't go to the property.
Yeah, it's, the wall shifted.
It all, yeah, the whole thing needs to, needs to be reconciled there, because that little platform you have, that vestibule looks like it might encroach on the neighboring property. So that's all gotta be really nailed down tight.
Forever?
And then all the existing site features need to be shown on the site plan, including fences, fences, valves, poles, et cetera. I think, because I just walked down there, it looks like there's two water valves serving this block.
Okay.
There's one serving the, the building that you're gonna renovate, and there's another one at the, off of Vineyard.
Yeah, I, I didn't survey the sidewalk in front, so I'll go add those.
Yeah, I mean, they're all, some may not even be in use. I don't know. I just saw the, the disc in the, in the pavement there.
I'm assuming at this point that we're gonna need to add new water, but we don't, we haven't determined that yet.
Yeah, you have to figure out what you have, what you, what you need, and then what you have in terms of what service line you have coming out. It looks like it was an old garage at one point.
It was an old electric store.
Mm-hmm, yes, with the windows open.
Okay.
Then didn't turn into a plumbing supply? Yeah, that's what I remember.
Last week, they said it was a grocery store at one point.
We weren't here.
Yeah, nobody was.
What's the plan for the commercial space?
Um, it was originally going to be my office, and now I've moved on to another location, which we'll talk about in another minute. But, uh, it's available for rent as a commercial space.
Let's see how you get your work.
So, again, you don't plan on making it a restaurant? Because if it was, you'd have to put a grease trap in.
No, no, it's way too small for that.
All right, and it's just, just, can you verify the size of the sewer line that's actually exiting the building? Because you're gonna need bigger than four inch.
Yeah, we, okay, verify that.
And probably the size of the water line? You're gonna have eight, eight, you have seven apartments, one commercial space.
Look at that guy.
Yep. Look at that.
So, um, my thinking is it'll probably go out to Milton Avenue. Even though it's a state road, because there's a sewer line now is in the other occupied part of the building. To connect to that line would be an onerous task to get between the two buildings.
Yeah, you really don't wanna do that, then you'd have a tenancy agreement, right?
Yeah, so then the pieces, and Sean is, I'm sure intimately familiar with this. If we connect the two buildings mechanically, the entire space gets sprinkled. And I'm assuming that's not what the applicant wants.
No.
The applicant wants to sprinkle only the renovated space. Because he'll have a, you've probably got separation now, I think, right?
We do, that's their case.
So, so there you are. I mean, it's, so I would say, in my opinion, coming out to Milton Avenue is probably the best route.
Yeah. I would agree, yeah. Yeah, the sewer currently leaves out of the northeast corner. It's in pretty bad shape. But until we start digging, I don't know what condition it will be in, but my assumption is that they're gonna end up replacing it. So a new line out onto Milton is probably gonna be a lot easier.
Yeah. And it's only the little building, the smaller building that you're doing anyway.
We're not doing anything to the existing units in the front. And that stairwell, that is the point where the two buildings meet. It is only a stairwell, and it is two layers of eight-inch CMU on one side, and at least one layer on the other side. And then that's, I don't know what's beyond it, but between those barriers, we have ten hours of fire separation. So.
Anyone else from staff got any questions?
Were you proposing any lighting as part of this project?
Exterior, no.
No exterior lights? Is it, what's there sufficient? Because I, I just came from there, and that alley, I think the alley has some signs up that's, you know, parking only for, I think, the Chinese restaurant that's there and.
And Jacob's Music.
And Jacob Music.
That sign would also to the commercial space here, but it's a fifteen-minute parking. There's only one spot. There are apartments already back there, they are lit. We wouldn't be changing that.
And Dave, are there any ADA issues with this one? You can think of?
As you mentioned, on-grade apartments.
Okay. And I noticed what looked to be like multiple heat pumps, mechanical units along the, the south side of the building, or in this case, the, the left side.
Yes.
Do you have enough space to get those in there?
Yes.
That's, it looks like it's pretty, pretty tight.
Well, despite the mislaid measurement up at the top corner, that is accurately laid. The, it has been overlaid with the survey, so that is the space. And if it becomes a problem, the owner owns the property next door to it, so if we have a problem, we could do a lively adjustment. But we.
Yeah, but that, that property could change hands in a few.
Right, right. Well, I'm saying, if this is an issue, we can make that easement or adjustment or whatever, because we have control of that property too. I believe it fits. So. I'm operating, yeah.
And I forget, do you have any building elevations that you would?
They're in the, are they not in this packet? Okay. And they're sitting on my desk, waiting to be submitted to building.
I don't, I said, I'll review them, I just, you know, pass that on for the board's consideration.
I will bring those in.
This is it, this is a, this is a long-awaited renovation to a space that we've all, I mean, so, just so, if you all recall, this was an old garage door there that was broken and, and glass was shattered out. This applicant, the, the current property owner, went and renovated that and put those windows in basic, and the brick, basically at our insistence, in order to beautify that space, because it was a total eyesore. And it was one of the primary buildings you see when you enter the Hamlet. You're at the bottom of the hill, and there was this ugly garage door. So this applicant has already done that piece. Right, so this, to me, is a is really sort of a, it's been a long time coming. I'm glad Sean's involved in it. You know, he's, he and I have met on, on this. It's, it's a home run for the town, in my opinion.
Yes, it is.
But again, some elevation drawings to see what.
But again, some elevation drawings to see what it's gonna look like would be kind of.
Yes. I'll provide those.
The only other thing I noticed, and this might be like a maintenance issue, is on the uh, the building closest to Vineyard, there's a couple roof leaders coming down and they have their PVC lines just kinda discharging onto the sidewalk right near where the gas meters are. Those should just be kinda fixed and.
You're talking on Vineyard, Vineyard facade.
Yeah, they come, they come right down the side and they discharge over by the uh, the gas meters.
Okay.
Paul, anything?
My, mine are kinda, uh, I'm getting feedbacks, so I apologize. Seeker type two action again, and then uh, I think we're looking at a county referral. And you may wanna do that at the same time you set a public hearing.
Okay.
So I'll provide the elevations and we'll be back next week and I'd like to set the hearing for the following month if possible, so if there any.
Yeah, based on.
Before we can schedule it. Okay.
Yeah, when we get that, then we'll be able to go forward from there.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a workshop meeting we're looking at, right? We'll know it's coming. Oh, we could get it. So if we get it before then, we're, we're, we're fine. For next month.
Yes. Okay.
All right, next one under old business is the, I'm gonna, what is it? Smiko design?
Smiko, that's correct.
Site plan seventy-one, seventy-nine Vineyard Avenue. If you don't mind, talk about that one.
Yep, so this is just a, this is the corner of Vineyard and Main Street, the uh, proposed restaurant. So this is just a minor update, uh, actually some discussion from uh, last month. Um, we're proposing to put in a restaurant there. Uh, the issues that came up in that conversation were the water feed for the sprinkler system and working out the ADA ramp to, for the sidewalk project, sidewalks. Taking those comments, going back to the owner, he decided to reduce the square footage, increase the size of the kitchen, so we now are below the threshold for a sprinkler and a sprinkler system is not required.
There you go.
So we eliminated that issue. We've reduced this, reduced the square footage to the occupancy is below a hundred and we no longer are required by building code to have a sprinkler system in this type of occupancy. So that one's off the table. Uh, the ADA project, I have already met with uh, V N L about the sidewalks. They, we're not able to provide any useful information at this time, but we are gonna have to do our best to give reasonable accommodation once we know where the sidewalks are. So I can't answer that question at this time. I'm hoping we can move forward with approving the use so that the uh, owner can continue the work while we're waiting for these sidewalks to be done.
That's it.
That's, that's where we are. That's what we got.
Dave, you got something?
Yeah, so Sean and I have had this conversation as well. Um, I agree with him a hundred percent. Reasonable, reasonable accommodation is all that's required for ADA uh, in an existing building. This was a brand new building with nothing shovel on the ground yet. It'd be a different animal. Um, so if the ramp is a little steeper than what would be allowed under a strict ADA, as long as they're making a reasonable accommodation for ADA, they would, they would be theoretically in the, in the zone of compliance, so to speak. Um, the rest of it, uh, again, Sean and I have the conversation about the sprinkler system, cause that's sort of a building department thing. Um, therefore no standpipe. I did alert, alert the fire chief uh, of the change and he has a copy of the plans. Uh, that's all I've got at the moment.
Dave, can you remind me where they, where they were anticipating putting the ADA access?
Yeah, right at the front of the building. Um, if you can see my, my cursor.
I can see it.
Yeah, right here. This is it right here.
As it stands right now, with a lot of work, we can get it to within about an inch of compliance. The news, if they were to actually replace the sidewalks out front, given the elevation of the street, I think that inch would be made up and then some. But uh, at my first discussion, they said, well, we're not planning to replace that sidewalk. So we'll have you looked at it. It's in terrible disrepair and the curb is disintegrated and yet as of now, it is not going to be repaired in the sidewalk project. So we're still working on that, is my point.
Okay, and where are we at with this one? There's no zoning in this one. Did you say that? There's nothing with this?
Nope.
Anything? He's met most of the comments that you've asked.
Yeah, the, the big issue we have is with the uh, the size, what are service size, but if they're under, if they don't require sprinkler now, I think that's, yeah, we had another comment like regarding the uh, the dumpster enclosure.
The, we don't have a dumpster enclosure on site. I have put a corral for small trash cans. Um, Control Point Associates have offered to um, provide dumper, uh, dumpster storage behind their facility across the street.
Make, make an agreement with them.
Yeah. So as of right now, we don't need it, but when we do, that's where it is.
Anyone from the board?
You're looking at internal grease trap?
Yes. Unless you want it under Vineyard Avenue.
Anyone else? Any questions? Dave, can we set this one up for a public hearing for, we, we'll, next week we can set the date.
Set it, set it for next month. I do have to refer it. It's um, right up Vineyard Avenue, so although it's a version of an existing building, I think because of the substantial change in use, uh, the county will wanna see it and so I'll, I'll send it along. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Well, here we are. So um Ryan Marshallek is not on the agenda for today?
Uh, that was the simple um, lot line revision, right? Yeah, I mean, we set it for public hearing, I think, Sarah, is that right?
So that's set for twenty-seventh?
Yeah, so that's sort of an easy one.
Uh, Heavenly Heart Pet cremation. Site plan, three fifty, I'm sorry, thirty-five, twenty-five and thirty-five, twenty-three Route nine W. Public hearing was scheduled for March twenty-seventh. We have the applicant here today. How are you doing, sir?
Very good, thank you. So there was some items that were still left in question from um, the last time that I was working on, uh, getting some answers to. So I brought some of that with me today. Um, I did receive the will serve letter from uh, Central Hudson. I had the seller revise the letter of agent to uh, reflect the owner as um, Radha Madhav Limited um, naming him as president of that. I know we briefly touched on um, the air registration with D E C. Um, it was not part of this process, but I, I did start conversations with them and an application to them, so um I had the Region Three Office just send a follow-up email um, just stating that, you know, um, they don't foresee any problems with that piece of equipment.
So that piece of equipment licensed through the D E C? I mean, is there, they come and do an annual inspection, that kinda stuff? Air missions?
So initially, um, they have to make sure that it meets New York State standards and then there's um, there are annual uh, maintenance inspections associated with it. Um, and licensing, um, that has to be kept with it uh, every other year or every year, depending on um, which licensing. There are several licenses that come from the state that allow operation.
Okay, so my next question would be, do we have to wait for the license approval before we couldn't go ahead with this? Okay. Well, I got.
You're gonna let me keep going and see what else. Yeah, any, any other information?
Yes, we, I think we covered that last time that it was, it was covered.
Well, I, I'm sorry, you guys were talking amongst yourselves. I couldn't hear the whole thing.
Oh, um, we, we were talking about the uh, septic being in the right of way. Um, but I think I had addressed that last time that it's under a use and occupancy agreement and I had submitted uh, an email um, addressing that with D O T. I thought I had the email confirmation, but I guess I did not print that. Um, I'll have to forward it. Uh, I also submitted my um, D E C determination paperwork, so um, they were pretty vague in any timelines to make a determination, but they said they're moving through them as quickly as they can.
Okay, uh, the rest of our updates are regarding the structure and the site layout. Um, the existing structure, as we've all discussed last time, is pinned to the rock face. Uh, doesn't have a full basement. It has an area that is cantilevered. We're gonna remove that building in its entirety and we're not trying to backfill and fill that in. We're not planning to use that space, so um, in addition, I got some more accurate uh, topography and adjusted the position of the building slightly so that it is sitting at an appropriate grade now. And so the updated plan has a proper, up-to-date, accurate grading for the new construction. And uh, let's see. I think that's really all we have at the moment because the building has not fully been designed yet, so we're.
Sean, no uh, no change to the curb cut, right?
No, no change to the curb cut. It's thirty-two feet wide. You know, probably it'll end up getting repaved.
No sign, sign will be on the building somewhere?
Uh, there'd be a sign and, so there's a, a showing on that elevation just showing, indicating a sign. This is not a business that needs to attract passerby traffic. So it's not gonna have, we don't need to use the, the highway street sign that was on the question last time.
Hey, let's go ahead, let's kill the dog and have him burn.
You know.
That's okay.
Dave, is this one of the projects that the fire chief wrote a letter on?
Yep.
Okay.
This one? Um, I got a bunch of them today.
So now you know how we feel sometimes, yeah, we get them all. That's good, though. I, I think he had a couple of questions in it too.
Yeah, about parking in a Knox box. We require all, all new commercials.
So that all comes that way anyways.
Yeah, so the Knox box for sure. Uh, that'll be relevant the next one and then it's a small lot.
And he said it would be assumed that a storage tank for a sprinkler system would be required? Or a fire pump? I just took my glasses off too, imagine. Alright, so listen, so that's for the last building, cause I forgot.
Right, but we've eliminated that.
You're doing that one too. That's true, we did.
Two.
Like you said, you get them all in at the at once. No, that is very good, yes. That's a big help. I, I'm not sure really what the difference was at this point, but I remember the conversation in the tri board, yeah. So that works. It's working. We're getting responses back, which is really good. It keeps you guys on board. What's it gonna be? Yeah, anything else from staff?
Uh, yeah, what's the source of the new topography? I see it's different than the, the map you provided.
Uh, the survey provided by uh, the surveyor.
That's different than the original survey that was sent in?
Uh, I believe it's the same one that was sent in.
The, the, the two contour maps are different from one another. They're not the same.
Right, we have an original one from like twenty years ago and then we have the one that was done just recently for this project. It's the new one that is the source of the.
Okay, so this is the new updated one, okay.
Yeah.
Might just wanna, wanna cite the source of where that elevation.
There you go, yeah.
Okay. Some of the, some of the grading around there looks a little bit steep. You might wanna kinda review that.
A point of clarification on that, um, the way my software works, I put in his map and then it creates a topography and so these topog, topo lines don't match his exactly. Point for point they are, but you're not gonna get a hundred percent registration from my drawing to his. That's why I provide his alongside of it. Um, that's just a, an issue with three D modeling and programming. So um, i- if you were to hold them up on a screen, you're not gonna see perfect registration.
Right, cause some of the contour labels aren't lining up with this map and they really kinda need to regardless of whatever kinda software that you, that you're running. But near the corner of the building, uh, which is gonna be the northeast corner, some of the grades in the paved area, they're a little bit too steep. You might need to take a look and try to flatten some of those out.
It, it's a steep site. The driveway itself from road up to house is, is an ADA grade slope.
It's, it's a one-on-two slope that you're gonna be putting a car on that car is gonna lurch up onto that. So you gotta, need to take a, take a look at that. And also the, the building footprint has moved about ten feet further towards uh, towards the highway.
Yeah, we shifted it off that bank, so we don't have to cut nearly as much of it out.
Right.
Trying to do as little grading as possible.
Right. Did you, were you gonna consider putting in a uh, like a protective fencing along that little hammerhead area to keep cars from driving over? I, I, I put, I saw like one boulder, there's, there's a big gap there where someone could kinda drive over.
Um, if someone really wants to drive over that, they're gonna go through just about anything you put there, so um, I put some boulders and some trees. If you want a, a commercial grade guardrail, we'll put it in.
Guy, if, if, if it's a, something that'll pre, prevent a vehicle from going down, just maybe show a boulder like right in the middle, a little, little gap area.
Okay, I put it up near the parking area. If you want it along the, the face, we'll put some in there too. No problem.
Just, just plop one there, just, just, just so it does, doesn't look like.
Yeah, we'll add that there. Yeah, no problem.
You're uh, you got your will serve letter from Central Hudson? Can provide, it's like what, two million B T U's or something like that? And you happen to know um that the size of the line that you're gonna be running in? Okay.
I mean, a six inch gas line.
It's gonna be, yeah, two, three.
Yeah.
Snow storage. You gonna lose any parking because of snow storage?
Over the bank.
You really can't, you can't put it over the bank.
I'm kidding.
We've, we've got plenty of space to plow it off the.
Yes. Right. That works.
Yeah, that's all we have with this. I, I didn't have, have a thorough review as I wanted, cause I didn't get these really until yesterday. But we'll have a, a more complete letter for you next week when handy.
Okay.
That's the regular meeting.
Paul, do you have anything?
Nope, Paul's set on this one.
Bill, since you're in Never Never Land there, you got any questions?
No, I'm good.
Anyone else on the board?
It seems to me you're working on the J D too, right? Nothing back on that, right? At all, right? Not a, not a thing?
Yeah.
I got, you got, you gave me that, yeah, it's still stupid.
Next on the agenda is He's Gone LLC, Taripin. You were here to speak on behalf of them too?
Architect for the project. Okay, so this one, uh, we discussed last time and got permission to break down the scope of the project to just building number one in the rear. And as of right now, that is just three offices on the second floor. And then we're asking for permission for a commercial space on the first floor, as yet undefined. But in order to address this entire building, there's about three thousand square feet of open floor space down there. Currently be.
Yeah, what the whole building is capable of doing.
Right, that's what, that's why we're addressing it. So if you apply to retail storefront to that, it would have X capacity of people and would require twelve parking spaces. So we're addressing twelve parking spaces for that and five for the additional spaces.
And that, you, that'll get shown somewhere at some point.
Yeah, that, on the site plan. I, sorry, I didn't give an updated site plan because there were no changes to it. Um, you asked for elevations on, at a interior building, sorry.
As you know, uh, Linwood one, at one point in time was just an outroad.
Right.
For, for the, when, when you get down there, but down where you are, it's like twenty-five feet wide. And then I, there's no, there's, I'm not sure where you're gonna have snow storage, A. B, I don't know where the turnaround is, and then there's an elevation issue. Is that, we, we're gonna show that somehow to us?
Uh, it's, it's on, all on the site plan.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go. It's behind you. The long-term plan for. Well, that, that.
Need to go look at this.
So the current access to the site is across the bridge. So the current access to the site is across the bridge. We discussed that in detail, uh, last month. We are shutting it down until it can be evaluated by an engineer. Ultimately, we'd like to reopen it, but that would be for further, it's down the road for other uses of the building. Building one is an occupancy of three units plus a retail unit. We are asking for permission off of, to access it off Linwood Avenue. I did get the fire department's comments about this today and I honestly did not understand them. Uh, they made it sound like they wouldn't drive a fire truck onto the site, which is.
Problem with the road is a problem. It's not even a road, it's a lane.
Well, right. So here we have a, a site. And roads that have existing buildings that the fire department is saying they won't serve.
But it was never a road. Remember that. Linwood was never really a road. It was a one-way lane hell.
But it is now, so. So I, I'm just.
Well, let's, let's.
We're, we're trying to move forward, trying to keep going, trying to do what we can do. And we're addressing these problems, but, uh, so right now we're not actually discussing the bridge. We're not discussing the floodway. We're not, so we're not doing anything with that area. We are going to close that access so that nobody accidentally drives across it.
As we spoke about last meeting.
Yeah, and so the, um, the, the update is the existing floor plans and the elevations. So.
Okay, anything from staff? Uh, since much of the site that was originally considered as being taken out of this particular, uh, incarnation of the application. The only comments we had would be, um, you know, regarding the access, you know, the, the easement for, uh, the neighbors next door. Some of those comments are still gonna, uh, pertain. But you're also proposing a, uh, sanitary sewer connection from that building to a manhole. So we're gonna need to see some information on that, including the, some, some details. Yeah, that's all we really had right now. We'll have a more complete, uh.
Yes, I'm planning to meet with Adam at the water department soon. Don't know if I'll be able to get that done by next week.
Paul, do you have any questions?
Yeah, main question being, have we connected with the town board on this project yet? And do we have any comments back from the town board?
Yeah, so Paul, I, I brought it to the town board on, at their workshop meeting this month. Um, I asked for comments, um, before the twenty-seventh meeting. Uh, they had a meeting last night and, uh, there was no comment there. I will ask the supervisor, um, if, uh, he thinks it's appropriate to craft a letter stating no comment. We're, we're gonna be up to the thirty days rather shortly, I think.
Yeah.
At least by the twenty-seventh, so.
Yeah, you just want to cover that base because it'd be relevant. I mean, if the town board is still apt to make comments, probably want to leave the public hearing open, um, after the twenty-seventh rather than, uh, move to any kind of a decision. Um, so it'd be nice to know.
It is my opinion that there will be no comment. Cause that's what I got.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, if I can, Scott, um, I do not see on the letter, uh, dated the March fifteenth for this property, that they will not serve. Um, they are asking, um, Sean, you and I talked about the, the stairs already, uh, so, and I know you were addressing them. Um, they are asking for a Knox box, which is what we require. Uh, that's an easy, low hanging fruit. Um, and that is the only thing that they're, um, sort of concerned about. Uh, I do not think that a fire alarm system will be required from this building. I don't think the code requires it. Um, the applicant can always do so, um, you know, at their, uh, but other than that, I think that the fire department doesn't have especially strong opinion, uh, uh, positive or negative, um, about the project. So I think we're in a good shape there.
We do, go ahead. I was gonna say, we do have an easement already in place for accessing this lot through the apartment complex across the rail. Which is what the fire department said in a, in a, an actual issue. That would be their access. We have that easement already in place. Yeah, so.
Was there anybody else on the board that's got any questions? You guys are good.
We'll, we'll get there. It's, it's a, it's a single right.
So do you see another property vacant that you might want to put your office in?
Have a list.
Very good. So I guess we'll see you next week too.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, so we have, um, Peter Miranda. That was. How they got that back that quick?
So he didn't have to move it?
No, I, I'm, I'm gonna be curious on that matter, but that was the case.
Okay.
Okay, great.
So that public hearing is still open till next week? Right? Or say again? I open it next week? It's set for next week is what I meant to say. All right, under continued public hearings, we have Vineyard Portfolio LLC special use permit nineteen twenty-five. I mean, nine, nineteen through twenty-five. Public hearing was open February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. And, um, is anybody here on this one? I know they're not here, but is there anything? What, what is this in particular? This project? Gotcha. I remember it now. Sorry. Sorry, guys. Are they already doing work there? I saw the new meter pan, um, that's what is it? A multi-me- uh, meter thing? Pretty good job. Yeah, we can't really talk too much of it since they're not here, but I just wanted to catch up on it. Also not at the meeting is thirty-five oh nine corp amended site plan thirty-five oh nine route nine W. And this is the project up on, um, you'll, if you don't mind, yes. All right. So the next is. Give me the update. So, um, so the owner of the property, um, has put mufflers on the, um, uh, vacuums. They're, they're already on there. Uh, he is, his intent in the spring, when things get a little more settled weather-wise, he's gonna plant, um, evergreen trees on that, uh, western, sort of southern portion there. As you go up the hill. Yeah. Um, you can look sort of down into the, into the car wash. Uh, all those, all that area there will have, um, trees to sort of block additional noise. Um, and, uh, I mentioned the timer for the, for the, um, vacuums. Um, his sense was that there wasn't really a lot of, like, late night vacuuming occurring there. Um, I did see somebody vacuuming. I came to work, uh, two days ago, it's, uh, three, Monday, um, at, uh, five-thirty and there was somebody vacuuming. Um, nah, it was, is dark and it was, you know, I, because I like it cold. I had my windows down on the truck. And, uh, you know, as I drove by, it, it, you couldn't really hear the vacuum running, um, cause I'm in a, you know, motor vehicle. So I, I don't know that, I think the neighbors' concerns there were people playing music.
Right.
While they were vacuuming. So I think, um, I don't know that it was a hundred percent the vacuums themselves. However, the addition of trees will be a, a benefit to the neighbors.
And what about behind the whole thing? Up on the, up on the ledge up top?
That is fully wooded.
It is fully wooded, right?
I just thought. Where the house is, uh, right above this property to the north side of that, it, there is less, there are less trees there. But if you look at the, like the Google maps, uh, from just last May, they, they, they shot, uh, May or June, I think, they shot, um, along nine W. Uh, that is fully, that is fully, um, probably sumac, uh, something quicker, I mean, that, you know, we'll put leaves back out quick. Uh, and then it'll die back off. However, on the, right behind where the, um, the car wash is and where the vacuums are, that is fully wooded.
So Dave, is the property order, he will or will not adjust hours of operation for the, for the vacuums?
Um, right now, we'll not. Not interested in that. Doesn't, doesn't really think that the impact is sort of, I, I, I think he thinks that the, uh, remediation pieces that he's offered already, you know, he went out and bought mufflers that are specific, uh, to those things. Um, uh, he has, um, uh, increased the cleaning time of tho- of those because evidently when they fill up, uh, the motor works harder, so it might be a little louder. He's increased the cleaning time of, of those things. And then the addition of trees, there were kind of trees along the back. And I don't, I don't know what they will be, but you know, I, I think he thinks that.
Yeah, this has nothing to do with the food truck.
A- and, and Bill, you took the words right out of my mouth. Uh, he also believes that these pieces that he's doing are him doing them as a good neighbor. Because the food truck will have limited noise impacts on anyone.
From a ge- from a generator, but nowadays generators.
They're gonna drop, they're gonna drop a line.
But they're gonna drop a line and where are they dropping the line? I don't think that goes anywhere where we've seen it on a, a plan.
Behind the structure? Behind the, I don't know. It'll be underground. Come up to a, you know, a little panel and just gotta ask.
But it might've been new to them too, because it didn't, we didn't speak about it till they started talking about the generator.
Does it have to be out of plan?
But my, my understanding is that there'll be a, underground. Underground, come up through a couple, they don't need a lot of juice.
Yeah, really.
Right.
But the surface is gonna be on, on a pole somewhere, right? And then it comes over.
Or probably be an amount, right? Cause you'll come out of the building.
Oh, like cross the street.
No, no, he's saying out of the building.
I mean, that's what I would do. I mean, I'm not. I didn't talk to Matt about that, but I.
Give him that. There's power out there right now on that side.
Uh, there is power on that side.
Yeah, alright, cause he's got.
Drive by, it's another video. Fred and I are gonna do.
Yeah, I guess it's.
I'm guessing it's the P P area, right? P P area?
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, to me it's six-one, even with the generator, it'd probably just be a little, one of those little Hondas. It, it, you know, until they get, until they get the line put in. Alright, just asking the question.
I'm good with it.
Alright, alright. Okay, we're keeping the public hearing open till next week. Uh, next under short-term rentals, actually. It's Kevin Knee, four hundred North Elton's Corners Road. Application and supporting documents were circulated to the board, type two status open. Take your pocket first, if you don't mind.
Hello. Um, I recently built a house at four hundred North Elton Corners Road. Um, it's a three-bed, three-bathroom home and I'm interested in making it a short-term rental.
Okay, we see any application, you're got three bedrooms and you're looking for eight occupants. It's two persons per bedroom. So we would reduce that down to six.
That, that's fine.
Okay. Um, so you have to make that change with the town. And then, um, I'm trying to think of what else. So this person that you have, um, Anita. What's, what's her name? So she lives, um, in Gardner, which is even in the range. Just going through everything else. Is the property outlined and posted so that people know that they can't go any further in that property? Sign on the front? Uh, the number of the house so that people know what it is?
We, we got a letter today from the, uh, from Dave's office on this.
Yeah, I saw that. You have a, have a big notice of property described. Did you get this notice too?
No.
You did not? But you know about it. So we do have a property described above, including any improvement thereon, which is owned or operated by you or which you have an interest, may be in violation of the town and state codes. Designation of a pool is actually a hot spa, a spa or a hot tub. As per the installer design requires a lockable cover. Do you have the lockable cover?
Yes.
And it's permitted? This pool's been permitted?
It is.
Okay, you gotta show us that before we do anything on that.
Okay.
That's all I got on this note. Anything else? Anyone else? No questions? And if, that's the only violation they have. Everything else is good with the property? Yeah, what we're gonna do is just have, um, someone, uh, make a motion to open a public hearing. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, any opposed? None. And we have one abstention, Bill. Um, so we're gonna keep the public hearing open till next week. Can we do that next? Cause we still need to draft a resolution. I don't know if we have it.
And he can come by Zoom if he wants, correct?
Yeah, he probably doesn't even need to be here. Yeah, I would still be here.
Okay, so I can do it via Zoom. I'll be out of town.
Are you currently using it as a short-term rental?
No.
Okay. And most of your tenants will be coming from out of state or?
I, I, I wouldn't know.
The biggest thing is I'm reading about your fire pit. So you have to put in there, there's certain times of year that you can't burn in townwide.
Yeah, we, we've passed all the fire inspections and have all the safety stuff listed on the.
Outdoor fire. Like right now, you can't burn outdoors.
Okay.
Yeah, they're gonna have to follow, you know, regulations.
Right, so what you should do is put, it's not like you get that regulation and, and put it in with your house rules.
Okay, no problem.
Anything else on, go ahead, I'm sorry.
There you go. There you go.
That's his pronoun?
Why, you don't wanna, you don't wanna answer your phone?
That gal looks after the house.
Attend next week and, um, by Zoom and we'll go through the rest of the process here, but alright, that's all you have.
Do I need to do anything between now and then?
Locking cover, proof of it, pictures, whatever the case may be. I, I don't know, is that good? Are you Dave pictures of what he's, what he's got on it or? Are you gonna want to see it? So, yeah. So if you don't get it done by next week, we won't be talking to you next week.
So once you, once you get the locking cover, call them, they'll come out and do the inspection. You'll be all good. But you got a week.
And so I'm just trying to, that, we want to do that before, so are you guys like free, like sometime next, in the, in the week, anytime?
You, you'll have to make that appointment with. Excuse me, if you could just do me a favor. He's gonna, if you could schedule it with the office, they'll make the appointment, but it has to be done by next week or we will not talk to you.
Okay.
And maybe I'll take the house rules.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second, you don't need a second. Oh, no, wait, I did. No, we didn't do it.
Is it that time?
No, we didn't do it. Do me a favor, can I ask you one question? What's going on with the villages?
Nothing.
I, so I spoke to Kelly. Uh, the other day, uh, they are, and they have a new person doing the site management piece. Uh, they are proceeding, e- even as we speak, with, uh, setting up the three models. Um, they're actually going, gonna do two models at first. Um, and then the other pieces, uh, again, according to the applicant's, um, representative, uh, the they are super aware, because I've said it out loud, I don't know how many times in the last three weeks to them, and they're now new representative. Um, but the light is due by August with the, with the application, you know, the approval because of moot, in my opinion. Um, and there's a pump station upgrade. They are, uh, super aware of that. They were waiting for the town to give them approved contractors for the pump station, which is not something we do. Um, just go get somebody to do it and do it to our specs and have a nice day. Um, so Kelly says that they're doing that as we speak. And Kelly is also the one who told me about the light, that they're aware of that, that they're waiting. Um, I guess they have to cut a, a five hundred thousand dollar to make sure the pieces start flooring onto the site. Um, and then, uh, I guess Corwood is coming back to do, um, site work and, uh, and, um, building prep, building slab prep.
Okay, my reason for asking is I'm getting a lot of snuff about that. And with the new project coming in on nine W and seeing that that's gonna be developed and blah, blah, blah. And look at the last. And look at the last project you guys approved that's dead in the water, that isn't ever going to do anything and blah, you know, here we are.
You should tell those people to hold their breaths.
Yeah.
Seriously, and hopefully, you know.
Yeah, well.
Hopefully it'll last an extra couple of months.
Okay, but, but it's just because of the slack for the other property that you're getting. And I got that, we all understand that.
But the question I would ask them is, what skin is it to you? I mean, what, what, what do any of these people care?
I, Facebook fuels it.
I mean, but the site, if you, does anybody remember the site, the shitty building that sat out in front of there?
Listen, exactly.
My, my only other thing that I could say to that is, it's, it's, you know, people, on the other property also on nine W, what kind of rents are they gonna be? We don't get into that, I don't, I, the guy's profit margin is all on him, I can't speak to that. If a project is legal, they come before us, we know what we're looking at, we can see the law, we can compare what they're doing to the law. If they're not meeting it, we get to say no. We can say no, you've got to mitigate the issues you have. Right now, they're up there still, but we're in limbo with it because we really thought we would get someplace a little further by now.
Quicker.
Quicker. And a little quicker. So it's not on the town's burden in any way to provide them with anything else since they've had this applied and, and passed.
You're a hundred percent right.
So I'm saying this now and because we are being recorded and all that, because people need to understand it. If anybody's watching it, it's not on us. We, people can only suggest to us or apply for something. If they can't fulfill that need, that is not our responsibility or in our purview to make sure that they fulfill the project that they applied for. It's not on us. So that's why I wanted to ask.
Quite frankly, although, you know, the area in and around the, the sales house sort of looks very industrial because, you know, there's no landscape or anything.
Agreed, right.
Wasn't designed to be a permanent fixture there.
Right.
I mean, I remember that brick building that, that Fred Wilklow had out in front of there.
Yeah, exactly.
That, I mean, they pushed it over and it fell over.
Right.
So, you know, quite frankly, although, and again, I get it, you know, if Genghis Khan attacked, they would have the wall to protect them.
Yeah, well, that's been suggested a few times, at least we have Fort Highland.
I mean, I think that, you know, if Bridgeview attacks, you know, to the west, we've got a good chance against them with that wall.
I believe the people on the hill will survive.
So, yeah, so nevertheless, the wall doesn't hurt anybody.
No, you gotta understand that this isn't just a couple million dollar project.
Oh, no, this is big money.
It's big, and people don't understand the gravity of the costs that's involved and actually what they've put into it already.
If you recall, we took a couple of years to go through the review on this for all sorts of.
Four years.
Yeah, so, five years. Five years, five, all through COVID, if you recall.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so that was a lot of fun.
This is the biggest project Highlands ever had.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I guess Bridgeview would have been, is comparable in that respect, yeah.
Dave, you mentioned in your conversations with the developer where they are on their financing? Because I thought that was the holdup on getting the light, was that they didn't want to pay for it out of pocket and they wanted to get it from through their financing.
My understanding is the financing is, is done, therefore they're going ahead with the, the models. Models were put on hold when they were ordered from Westchester modular, I think, yeah. So they were put on hold until sort of things got sort of locked up in terms of our approvals. Now that those are done, my understanding is the financing is done and over with.
Well, I can tell you that there's no new mortgage been recorded against that property, so.
No, there wouldn't be. There wouldn't be.
Any lenders lending money is gonna record a mortgage.
No, 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 it's private equity.
Private equity, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah.
They're gonna be part of the donorship.
So that'll be contractually driven, right now, yeah, I don't, and look, I'm not going back to prison for this project. So, yes, but it's private equity.
Okay, good.
Well, when you talk to them, let them know we're eagerly, eagerly waiting the light and those items.
We're all gonna be eligible to live there soon.
Yeah.
Hey, you're stepping on us, is that only because I didn't make mention of that today?
Yeah, probably a little bit. If anybody has seen, actually speaking of senior projects, the project behind Golden View, that project is approaching completion. It is.
Beautiful.
Awesome.
Yes, looks good.
It's awesome, it's, it's really, it's a beautiful building and it's huge and it's, I want, I want to say it's seventy percent affordable. Seventy percent affordable.
Well, most of us on the board will have a place to go then, one of the time.
Well, yeah, I mean, the civil servants in the room maybe, so that's almost, you know, we're very close on that. And then I had a meeting yesterday, I was talking about it earlier. The Chevy dealer, we were talking water and sewer, we think we've got that sorted out, they've got some homework to do. I have landscaping plans, I have new elevations for multiple locations on those buildings, I'll show them to you, that's you next week. You recall that we have an informational meeting, the public's been invited, mostly to show them the updates, I think, from the previous meeting. Where they weren't invited, but we let them, so we, we wanted them to be engaged.
It was a positive thing too, I would say.
And actually, and actually the new plans sort of came out of those discussions.
Yes.
There are no townhouses along the back now, those are all gone, there's a clubhouse, there's parking, there's more trees. You know, so, and the, and in my opinion, the, the new elevations I just got today, just to review before they were shared publicly. I think they're awesome and I think you guys will really like it.
And, and the.
Oh, fifty foot, it was passed last night.
Well, very good, there you go.
Okay.
In the highway business district. Again, it's the only zone that's allowed. Somebody asked me about it Tuesday and they were sort of, you know, fifty feet, I go, yeah, it's only fifteen feet more than what's allowed now. Fifteen feet.
When you're looking up that high, can you really tell?
This is from twelve feet? It's only that much taller and it's three hundred foot away. You know, from any, from you driving by, to me, this is, I think, you know, and actually the person who was giving me a little bit of grief about it. Thinks that there shouldn't be any development in Highland because they want it to stay green. And I don't know if you guys know this, but the way to keep the town green is to go up and not spread out.
Yeah, you're right.
This has been shown in so many locations.
Yes.
Right. Okay, so that's all I got, that's all, so thank you for listening.
Do you want to talk about that? And guys, I'll say another thing too, just a little housekeeping on this stuff. When we do the Airbnb stuff, we've really got to go through it a little bit, make sure, ask the questions, ask any question you want to ask them. I think Franco asking them today, have you been using it as an Airbnb, was a really good question because in most cases, I mean, we can't do anything at an enforcement level. But I'll say this.
Sarah catches them all the time.
There you go.
She's always online checking, because we, we want to know. And actually, I gave you that thing today, right?
Yes, so he, Dave gave me this information about the homeowners that were charged with manslaughter following a fatal fire at the, an illegal Airbnb. Now, I can't tell you how many times people have come before us that were illegal until this law came in and they didn't care. They cared less about the idea that, you know, the safety of others, it was more about their money. The law was in effect, they still didn't care, it was, can I say, over a year? Some of these people knew and they did not comply with the law still. Well, the last thing I want, I would want to see is this happening and the town being changed to Highland instead of where it's from. So we do have to do our due diligence to ask these guys these questions and make sure, I mean, if you know about it, bring it up to people, tell them to get to the town. Tell them to sign up, you know, for an application.
Yeah, we don't make it hard here. I mean, you guys don't make it hard for people. You know, other towns, Gardner, holy shit. I mean, it going through the wringer in Gardner just to get one of these. We don't make it hard, our rules are much better.
And we're not making, it's not silly easy either, it's not like these people are just getting passed through. I mean, we don't even get to town, the, the public coming in saying, we don't want it here anymore because it's not what we would have in our neighborhood. A lot of people understand, it's, it's, it's not a bakery. You know, they're not asking to make a bakery, it's a place that residential people want to go live or, or stay at an Airbnb in a residential area. Their residential, the use is the same, it's just that people are making money on it.
But I can't tell you how many smoke detectors we have not found and ma, and made them put in.
And that's what happened with this one, there was no working smoke.
No working, no smoke detectors in the building at all, working or otherwise.
Mother and a daughter died and the owners got charged.
And they didn't have, well, they didn't have a permit, the town.
They were not, they were in illegally Airbnb.
They were required to get a permit and they didn't have a permit. No sm, and this is the same thing, and this, the reason this all started, because when I go to the Outer Banks, I go to these four story buildings that are up on pylons. That are, you know, fifteen bedrooms and it's only my wife and I, we don't, nobody else comes to us, just us. We rent the whole house, it's right on the ocean and there's not a fucking smoke detector in the building. Yeah, I don't care, okay. But when I tell you there's ten bedrooms in this building and not a smoke detector in there.
It's amazing, isn't it?
I go, what? And every time I've been to the banks and we go fairly often in the fall, because it's really cheap and there's nobody on the beach. Never been a smoke, I've never seen a smoke detector in the Outer Banks. Oh, brand new. This, this is brand new. I, it's a mystery to me. It's a mystery to me. Yeah. Again, that's, everything's debatable where you're at and what's going on and who knows, you know, we don't know.
Then the question is, how many illegal ones do we still have in this town?
Well, that's why we chase it, and Sarah's, Sarah checks it once a week, twice a week sometimes, finds a new one, they send a letter out, we send a complaint. Order remedy and ultimately they either go to court or they figure out they should come to you, but it's course they need to come.
Well, I tell you, I would say, I would suggest this, if you're getting them to come in after this law's been in effect this long, you need to let us know that on the application too. Because it's, it's one of those things where, I'd really love to take this and just hand it to that person. Here you go, this could be you. That could be you. And worse, that could be a family member of mine that might have rented that room and not known, so. Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. And again, guys, just keeping, I mean, we have a nice list, Sarah, if you could, just, when we get these, just put the list out, John is new. So it would help him kind of keep on top of what kind of questions we ask too. And just interjecting it, guys, just, listen, I say it all the time, a bad comment is a good comment for other people because at least you could feed off of it. So if it's a no, it's a, it's a disagreement, whatever it is, you need that going back and forth, so we're covering things. I mean, so many things people have said on the board, it's actually made me think of other questions, so we feed off of each other is what I'm getting at. So ask the questions. It's important. So, all right. We're good now. Motion has been made. Meeting's over.
Thank you.
Adios.
Bye, guys.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay.